I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 19th work session, Martin County Board of Education. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. As the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Cargill?
Let's pray. Dear Father, we thank you for this opportunity tonight to be here in support of our public schools in Martin County. We ask prayers for, for our improvement, for the morale of our staff, for the learning of our students, Lord. Lead, God, and direct us to make wise decisions and to learn about everything that's going on in our public schools today. Lord, we thank you for all our blessings, in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, need a motion for approval of the agenda?
The mo-
Second. Have a motion and a second for approval of the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Information, action items, fundraiser requests. Dr. White?
Um, yes, board members before you, you have the last of the fundraiser requests for this school year. Um, and we are asking for your approval for these final, um, needs this year.
Okay, entertain a motion?
Move to approve the fundraisers as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the fundraiser request as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Summer school update. Ms. Lily?
Good evening.
Hello.
Dana?
For approval purposes, um, I would like to discuss with you the summer program plan. The summer program plan is for us to go in and reteach and then retest students who are not proficient on the EOG or the EOC throughout the year. This includes first semester and second semester at the high school, plus third grade through, um, eighth grade EOG in math, and grade four through eight in reading, five and eight in science. And at the high school level, it would be math one, math three, biology and English two. And, um, we would remediate on the days, um, June 7th is the last day for students. And then we would, um, start remediating on the 12th for the instructional days through the 18th. And then we would test on the 19th and 20th of June. And this would be at the end of the year. This data is calculated into proficiency for our school system and for the schools. Um, it does not count for growth, for the teacher growth, because it will be the second time that the students had taken the test. Um, however, um, it does count for proficiency, and that's, that's what we're looking for to gain. So, I'd like to request approval for this plan.
Need a motion?
I make a, I make a motion to accept the planned summer school, um, events.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the summer program plan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I also have for informational purposes tonight, um, we previously, I spoke to you about the regular calendar. And we reviewed that and talked about our options that we would have available. And tonight, I was asked to bring back, um, the early calendar. And so, the difference in the, some of the differences between those. The early cal- early start calendar would have a starting school, um, on August 12th instead of the 26th of August. And then, um, we would have a semester change in December instead of in January. So, our December date, our last day in December would be the 20th, and so we would test the week of the 16th through the 20th. And then, we would also have, um, an end date on June the 6th on our regular calendar, but on May 22nd on our early start calendar. And so, that would get us out with teacher workdays and everything by the end of May, where we would have all of June where we could come in and bring in, um, all the students for credit recovery and be able to get graduates out that way ahead of time and get them out by June. And so, that would still count for this school year or for that school year. And then, it would also help us, um, in finance so that we would have everything closed out in June, and we could help them push that along a little bit faster as well. So, we wanted to just kind of give you that information so you would have what an early start looked like compared to a regular start, um, so that when you, the next time we vote on it, you would have some more information.
Thank you.
Any questions?
What was the beginning date for the old calendar or the regular?
August 26th is your regular.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Bennett?
Good evening.
Hello.
Just a second while we get this- And as Ms. Bennett is coming, I asked her to do an update tonight for our technology department. We know a lot of the, um, upfront instructional work that has gone into this year. A lot of changes, a lot of adjustments in curriculum, um, and infrastructure. But a lot of work has also gone into behind the scenes. Ms. Bennett has done an incredible amount of work along with her extraordinary team in updating the technology infrastructure, all the way from literally the switches and wires behind the technology to the instructional technology components that is in the hands of our children and our staff, to actually working with our children who are here tonight and gonna share some of those updates as well. So, we're gonna turn it over to Ms. Bennett to share, to share the incredible work that has gone on in our technology department this year.
Um, so these will be the updates for the past, um, seven months, which is how long I've been here now. Um, so we'll start back from the beginning. Um, I want to start with ClassLink. This is our single sign-on platform, and I just wanted to show y'all how it works. Um, all the students' apps are in one place, so they don't have to keep logging into all their different things that they use in their classrooms. Um, our K-2 students have these little quick cards. It's just a QR code. Um, they open up their Chromebook like you see on this screen over here, and all they do is scan the code. And it will sign in their Chromebook for them. So, they don't even have to put in their username or password or anything like that. It automatically signs in their Chromebook for them.
Is this, this just K-2?
K-2 just for these codes.
Oh, okay.
But K-12 has, um, ClassLink.
Okay, right, that's what it'll say.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We can enable the codes for everybody, but we just do it for K-2 for now. Yeah. Um, so when they open up ClassLink, um, this is how it, how it looks when they get here. Um, so all their apps are housed in one spot. Uh, we do roster some of our, um, programs such as iReady, Learning.com, um, so that we don't have to spend a lot of time creating the rosters for, for teachers. And there is analytics behind it, and I'll show you that. Um, so we can see the usage of ClassLink. Now, we just started ClassLink, um, about a month ago, so when the semester changed, we, um, initiated it. So, we can see how many people have logged in. Um, there's quite a few, 82,000, almost eighty, eighty-two and a half thousand in just, uh, a month. It's a lot of logins. Um, and then we can also see our, um, app usage. So, iReady, 16,000 launches. Um, and then you can just see how much usage we have of each of the different apps.
So, these, these apps are used by the teachers in their presentation, right?
Correct.
Or for homework or whatever.
Yep. Um, Learning.com is another, um, platform that we've introduced this year. It is provided, um, free by NCDPI for Tier 1 and Tier 2 school districts, and it's online safety and digital citizenship lessons. Um, this also got introduced at the change of the semester. Um, it satisfies our SIPA compliance for E-Rate funding. And then it also has like keyboarding, some coding lessons and basic computer skills. Um, and a lot of our students have already logged in on their own and have done all the lessons they need to, to reach, um, SIPA compliance, which is pretty cool because they're just logging in and doing it on their own time. So, back to the ClassLink, when they go to Learning.com, they just click on it and it opens it up for them. They don't have to put in any usernames or passwords, um, or anything like that, and they can just start their lessons. Um, same thing with iReady. They just click and they log in. So, it makes it a lot easier for teachers and for students to move on through and not have to log in and remember passwords and all that stuff. So, that's how the ClassLink works.
How about the individual teacher subscriptions or, like, at different schools? Do we have all those apps too, so everybody can use them or?
So, I have a, um, Google form that they can fill out, and it's on all the teacher dashboards. And they just open the form, they request whatever apps they want, and I enable them on my end.
Nice.
And then they have whatever they ask. Yep. Whatever they ask for, they get.
That's great.
Mm-hmm. It really makes things a lot easier for logging in.
And then it shows up for other teachers too to use, right?
Correct. It goes into a library and you can just add it.
Gosh.
Yep.
So, it's no excuse for teachers not being able to find websites.
Everything's in one spot.
Whereas 10 years ago, it was a problem.
Right, right. Um, so STEM, I'm gonna start here, um, just because we have these six-year-olds back here who are ready to show you what they know. Um, but these are the big, um, things that we're using in the classrooms for instructional technology in STEM. There are some other outliers, but these are the main ones that, um, a lot of the schools have. So, Sphero, I think maybe every school except for one has a set of, a class set of Sphero. So, 15 Sphero robots that they can use with their students. Um, here are some pictures, um, and you can see the excitement on that little guy's face. He's actually in the room. Um, but they get so excited when they get to do these things, um, and they don't even realize that they're learning, um, which is, is really cool. Um, so Doug, if you know that first video? So, I don't know if you can hear him, but he's telling you that it's gonna go out a little bit too far, and then they go back and fix it. They debug and they go back and fix the code to follow that text. Um, and you can see that they work together. Um, they're using their new, um, those are some of the new Chromebooks we were able to purchase. Um, they are, um, tablet style. They flip over. Um, really nice for them to use on the floor with the robots. India is another one. Um, it goes by colors, so the students put the color blocks on the floor, and the color tells what kind of code the robot's gonna follow. Doug, if you'll play that first one.
I missed a blend.
So, you see on that one, he did miss that blue, um, square, so it didn't tell the robot what to do, so he had to go back and fix it. In the next video, you can see that he fixed the problem and it was- He was really excited. He, he hides his excitement pretty good, but he was really excited.
So, what is an example of code? You tell it to go to the right or left or?
Right, so those, those color squares, and we're gonna do it down here in just a few minutes.
Oh, okay. I have a lot to learn there.
You get to learn all about it. Just a few minutes. Um, we also have virtual reality. So, the, um, black case on the right, Riverside middle, has a set of those. Um, and South Creek middle purchased one, and then Riverside High has purchased two of the ClassVR, which is the orange ones on the left. And they are true, like, curriculum-based. Um, the teacher gets on a website. The teacher pushes out what the students are gonna look at, so they don't get to look at what they want to. They have to look at what the teacher tells them to look at. So, um, it's truly for instruction and education, um, both very good virtual reality platforms. I almost brought those for you guys, but I thought that might be too much. Um, and these are pictures of the students using virtual reality in the classrooms. Um, the ones on the left, the black ones, they're, they use like, um, phones. And the ones on the right, they are a one, all-in-one inclusive headset.
So, what are they looking at?
Different things. They could be looking at animals. They could be looking at different places. They could go on field trips to places they couldn't visit, you know, they'd never be able to go to, but they can go to them on those headsets. It's really pretty neat.
Is this subject-oriented?
It can fit in any subject area.
So, classroom, like a science class could use this? So, what do they do? Check them out from the library or something?
Yes, correct.
Ah, the clam in the squirrel.
Oh, and exceptionally STEM, we just started, um, we actually painted this morning, um, in an adaptive classroom at Janesville, which are the pictures on the right. Um, that was a great time. Those kids, those are the Sphero robots we just talked about, and we put paint and used pool noodles so they couldn't paint all over the floor. And they just drew those robots all around and mixed the paint up altogether.
Oh, cool.
Philip here on the top right, he decided that robots weren't really for him, so he took the pool noodles and started beating them together. He was making sounds. Um, he sat still. They say he don't sit still ever. He sat still for probably a good 10 minutes playing with those pool noodles. Um, but they, even these kids can use the robots, so the robots fit for everybody.
So, so this is available at the middle school?
These are available pretty much at every school. So, the B-bots in front of you are more like pre-K, first grade. And then the Sphero robots can be for any, for any grade level, but every school has a set of Sphero's.
So, we don't have to come to the innovative center to teach?
They have it right at their school. Yes, ma'am. Um, so here's some pictures of, um, students using the B-bots. These are first graders. Um, Doug, if you'll play that first video. And you're gonna get a chance to code the B-bots, but they actually coded that B-bot to go and knock those bowling pins down. And it was actually math that they were doing. They were counting how many pins they knocked down, um, so they were doing some addition problems. Um, but you can see the excitement. They were learning and they were excited and they were happy. And all these pictures, you can see that they're truly engaged in what they're doing.
And, and the teachers have had workshops on all this?
Yes, ma'am. So, we've been using the media coordinators. We go in and help. So, media coordinators and myself or different people from my team will go in with the teacher until they're comfortable and are able to do it on their own, and then we'll back, back house.
Nice.
And then, we come to our Janesville students that are here in the crowd. Um, they got accepted to go to NC Ties and, um, present at the NC Ties, um, conference coming up in March. Um, and they're gonna showcase their B-bots. So, I wanted to bring them here to give them a chance to talk to adults and practice before they go off the conference, but also for you guys to have a better understanding of how to code and what it looks like in the classroom. So, I hope you don't mind, but we're gonna practice coding with them in just a few minutes. But I did want to ask Jessie Dickerson and Lauren Merr to come up. Um, Jessie has been, like, on it. I was looking back at some pictures and back as far as September, early September, um, Jessie was doing things in her media center at Janesville. Um, and then she has some teachers just jump right in, but they have really done a lot. And I know you've seen a lot of what Janesville's been doing, but they really jumped in. Anytime I ask Jessie, she's like, "Sure, come on and we'll figure it out." So, I don't have to have a grand plan, but she, she just rolls with it. Um, but, so I did want to thank Jessie and also let her introduce her, the students.
Um, thank you for having us. Um, if you can't tell, we're very excited to be here. Um, and so, I'm going to announce our students, and they are actually gonna come up here and teach you guys how to code the B-bots. Um, we've had a wonderful time doing this. We've had a wonderful time doing this. We have done it across the curriculum era, areas, reading, science, social studies, math. Um, but tonight, we're just gonna do a basic how-to, just to get you guys familiar with our coding world. And these are actually the guys that are going to NC Ties with us in Raleigh in March. So, at this time, um, when I call your name, come hang out with us up here, okay? Alright, we have Naylani Grimes. Where do you want him to stand? We have Fiona Armenta.
And she's super pumped because she just lost a tooth in the ground.
We have Avery Moore. Peyton Bachelor.
Look at it, little girls.
Michael Pike. And Slade Rose.
So, if y'all will come down, the first graders will show you how to code the B-bots. And please ask them questions about what they're doing, and they will explain it to you. You guys can go ahead and turn the B-bots on.
So, what do you do? Push them all at the start of the beginning? Then boy, it starts. I think you have to count once with. You coded it correct?
See, that's right.
Y'all made it go crazy.
Hey, Ms. Bennett won't bite you. I promise.
One, two, three, one. I do have to forward again to get from here to here. Come on, come on. Number 30, but it's coming, so we should be going to. We should have started there. Exactly. We should have started there, exactly.
Woo!
Thank you guys. I guess we gotta move on with the board meeting though.
That was fun.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Well, see what coding is now.
Now you understand what coding means.
That's right. The only coding I knew was medical coding, so.
Um, can we get the next slide?
Uh, before y'all leave, I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight and showing us how to do this. It was very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
So all of our students have Chromebooks. Um, these were the new ones that we were able to purchase for K-2. And our teachers also have these, this style, um, Chromebook. They do have a stylus, so they're able to write on their screen. Um, so they are able to write on their screen as they're casting. I'm gonna show you what casting looks like, um, but I did want to show you that.
So we don't use smartboards anymore, do we?
No, ma'am.
It's just the, uh, TV screen.
We do have some touch TVs, um, but we put Chromecast on those as well. So, um, all our TVs are outfitted with Chromecast and then you're able to.
Are you saying cast, C-A-S-T?
Yes, ma'am. Able to cast your screen. And all you have to do is press in the code. And then I'm able to cast my screen onto the TV. And with the touch capability of the Chromebooks, um, I'm in Canva right here on a whiteboard, which we're showing teachers how to use, um, the Canva whiteboard. So they can use the touch capabilities of their Chromebooks. Um, but it has the tools on the side, so you just select your marker, um, how thick you want the line to be. And then you're able to just, um, draw on the screen. So you can do, um, math problems or, you know, whatever they're working on in class. You can draw there and it shows up on, um, the TV. They can also take their Chromebooks, which flip over to tablet style. And they can able, they can hand it to the students and say, here, work out this problem. And the student can work out the problem for the whole class to see.
And then they can cast, he can, he or she can cast that on there.
Yes, ma'am.
From the student.
Mm-hmm.
Computer.
Yeah. So that's how the casting works. Um, we also have, uh, this page marker, um, extension installed too. So they can go to any, um, website or wherever and they can write on their screen for that as well. So annotations, um, different things that teachers do in their classrooms. They're able to use the, the writing capability and make their TVs interactive.
And that's Chromecast too, right?
Yes, ma'am. Yep. So that's how the casting part works.
How'd it play?
Um. So just some pictures of students using these, um, touch Chromebooks in the class. And you can see they put them different ways, they fold them different ways. Um, they're very durable, um, and just easy for the students to handle and use.
And they all have headphones too?
Yes, ma'am. And this is a picture of Josh, um, Josh McIntyre is a new technician we have, um, on staff now. And he has been going to every school, um, showing every teacher how to use the Chromecast, how to use the touch, um.
So a one-on-one?
Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm. Yes.
That is wonderful.
Um, we did install cameras, um, on all campuses have camera coverage. Um, all admins and SROs at each school have access to view the footage. Um, as you can see on the screen, the picture is, um, very clear. You can pick out, um, you can hear whole conversations, the sound is clear. And we have at least thirty days of video recording at every location. So it saves the recordings for thirty days, at least, some longer. We have door access controls, um, so you can take your badge. Teachers can take their badge and they just swipe it on the access control and they get entrance to the building. Um, we started with the 900 building at Riverside High. And the administration, um, said they've been piloting it, it's been working great. Um, so we're gonna start moving to the rest of the campuses. We do have to reprint all the badges because they are on special RFID badges that allow the scan to happen. Um, so we do have to reprint all the badges, but we are in the process of doing that for the rest of the district. Some infrastructure updates. Um, we did get a bandwidth increase from one gigabyte to two, um, from the state. Um, we do have a significant increase in usage, um, so they see it's all fit to give us more, um, bandwidth. Um, and we're also upgrading all the old switches and access points at Riverside High, Riverside Middle, Janesville, South Creek Middle, and EJ Hayes. Um, the other schools are already complete, um, so th- those are the ones that are left. And then we will have a complete rewire of South Creek Elementary that will start, um, next month. They'll get new switches, um, new access points, new ports. And by the end of the summer, we'll have completely new infrastructure of the whole system.
Did we use estramoney for that?
Some of it, yes, ma'am.
And some of it wasn't.
Some of it's E-rate, some of it's ester, yes, ma'am. Some of it's, um, the state fifteen money. We also did an, a new asset management, um, platform, One-to-One Plus. Um, we are having to build that out within the next couple of weeks, we should be able to deploy that. Um, we did a complete inventory of all Chromebooks, um, and teacher devices over the summer. So we have, um, a good inventory of everything. Within One-to-One Plus, we can track how we purchased, we can track the end of life. Um, and there's a ticketing system, um, for staff, students, and all the different locations. We can even have students do, um, tickets. We can give them limited access where they can, um, do tickets for our student tech teams. So they can repair and do things that they need to do. Um, we can track repairs and we can even invoice, um, student device repairs out, out of this, uh, platform. And there is a mobile app that goes with it too, so.
Now who does the repairs?
Um, we do a lot in-house, um, the two, the student tech team does a lot. And I'll get to them in a minute, but we have students doing most of the repairs.
Students?
Yes, ma'am.
At the IC?
At the IC, at Riverside High, and at South Creek Middle.
And that kills me, you got end-of-life information now, seeing you talking about the computers dying.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. They go out of date, um, they stop being able to be updated, and then we have to replace them.
Okay, thank you.
But this will ki- allow us to track when we have to replenish.
Uh-huh.
We have securely that we deploy, this is secure the classroom. So this is an example of what a teacher's, um, screen will look like. So all those thumbnails are the students', um, Chromebooks in their classrooms. So they can see what every student is doing, all the websites that they're on. If they're somewhere they shouldn't be, they can close them out. If they want them to go to a certain website, they can push it to all the devices in their classroom. Um, just a good way for them to manage what students are doing.
So this is what the teacher is looking at?
Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm.
Neat.
We also have securely aware, which tracks what students are searching for, um, or writing about in Google Docs, um, pretty much anywhere on the web. Um, and it tracks if they are at-risk students or are having any at-risk behaviors. So that we can monitor, um, them, follow up with them, um.
Wait a minute, how do they decide that?
There are certain keywords that they track, so if they write, uh.
So this is in their writing, the student writing?
Yes, ma'am, or if they, if they do like a Google search.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Right, okay.
The student tech teams, we have six students here on the IC. We had four last semester and we have six this semester. Um, Riverside High and South Creek High are both new this semester, they have a total of eight. And then South Creek Middle has thirty-three students and they started this semester as well. So the student tech teams are actually repairing. You can see on this picture, we have, um, some schools have purchased, uh, printers, big poster printers. And they are putting the poster printer together. Um, they're just doing a lot of the stuff that helps us not have to do such, as much of the, as that kind of thing. Yep, the Chrome, the.
Now, do they do it during their class or is it outside of school?
During their class, yep. They have a student tech team course, they get credit for it, it's a local elective.
Okay.
They're able to do these things. The top picture are the new, um, TV carts for the TVs that we purchased. They put a lot of those together, um, but they do replace screens, um, and do just basic maintenance of the Chromebooks as well.
Now, what's the new line panel saying? Uh, what's the new line panel?
New line is a, it's a panel, but it's basically like a TV. It has, it comes with a seven-year warranty, it's more commercial than just a normal TV.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. It'll last longer.
Okay.
But it's basically the same.
So that's what we got for most of the classrooms, I would think.
Um, we have mostly Samsung TVs, but we did just purchase, um, I think, close to thirty new line panels. So that's the direction we want to move. We'll, we'll get the warranty, seven-year warranty, we don't get that with a TV.
Okay, got you. And a poster printer, so it'll print.
Huge.
In that.
If you go to Riverside High, um, Ms. Most has already printed some there. She's got big posters on the, in the cafeteria that tell the students what to do when they get there, just really nice posters.
Is it laminated or?
You can laminate as big as the laminator you have, but the poster printer is bigger than their laminator.
Gosh, that's a neat.
Um, this is some pictures of the student tech team here at the IC doing some computer repairs. Um, Jimbo Shiver's been doing a lot of that, teaching them, um, how to repair Chromebooks, yep. And most of these kids were in there last semester and came back this semester. They enjoyed it so much, they wanted to, to keep doing it.
Do they, do they get a credential for it?
Um, they will get some, um, credential certifications, yes, ma'am. So they can get, um, Google Certified, CompTIA, Microsoft, um, a lot of other things that they can, if they want certifications, they can do that. So we did get a fifty thousand dollar grant, um, sponsored by the North Carolina Business Committee for Education. Um, and they, we used that money to purchase, um, parts, the repair carts they use. They have mechanical tables in their classrooms that go up and down. So if they want to stand up the work, they can do that, if they want to sit down, they can lower it, they're really nice.
Yeah, and here are the certifications that they can.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the, what's CompTIA?
It's just a, a technology certification that they can get. It's the, the basic certification for starting a job with technology in the workforce. Uh, we also are starting robotics and this is brand new. We did get a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, um, there were forty-four applicants, um, and twenty-two were awarded. They had a million dollars in the budget and, um, two million was applied for. So, yeah. Um, we do have twenty-eight students who have signed up and they're excited and ready to roll. And I'm not even sure they know what they're signed up for, but they're excited.
Now, is this gonna be a class for them or?
This is after school, um, and the competition is in March, the, um, twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, so it's gonna go fast. Um, but they had their first practice this afternoon, um, and we're just gonna roll and hope for the best, but they're excited. Um, the Pitt Pirates Robotics from Pitt County, they actually came last week and worked with our students. And they're willing to keep working with them and helping them and helping us, um, learn what to do. They're a very established robotics, um, program.
Is this for high school?
Yes, ma'am. Yep, they actually have invited our students to dinner while we're at competition and they want to pay for it. Um, just a really nice, um, it's a really good event, really good, um, thing to be a part of. And this is what the robot from last year looks like, it's a very big robot. Um, Doug, if you'll play that middle video. So that, the robot for this year came on Friday in boxes. It's pieces that they're gonna put it all together, all the electronics, all the mechanics, everything. They're gonna have to do it all theirs, theirselves and learn how to drive it. And there is a coding portion too, for thirty seconds they have to code it. But that's the Pitt County, the Pitt robotic team that came and worked with our students. They actually sat in the cafeteria at Riverside High during all the lunches and showed the students. They were excited. And then a little bit of artificial intelligence, we've, um, started to dabble in a little bit. Um, I did a presentation with the principals on ChatGPT and showed them some things that they can do with that. I don't know if any of you guys have used that or not, but, um, and also Magic School, which is another artificial intelligence that our teachers can use. And the main thing that art, that artificial intelligence helps with is gives them time. Te- teachers can put in there about lesson plans they need, they can tell it what they want, what standards they needed to cover. Um, and it will spit out a lesson plan for them, a good solid lesson plan. Of course, they can adjust it from there, um, but it just helps save a lot of time.
Where does the lesson plan come from? How do you know?
The artificial intelligence generates it.
How do you know it's reputable?
Well, you have to look through it and make sure it's reputable, um, but it's, it's pretty good.
So all our teachers have this now, Magic School?
We purchased a pilot, um, that we'll have through the end of July to see what we think about it. And then, yes, we'll go from there. They're all very excited about it though, it does a lot of, a lot of stuff. I think that's the end.
This has been amazing.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
So I just want to give a shout out to Ms. Bennett and our, uh, our entire technology team. Um, we had some good things with technology, Mr. Guard had done a very good job with technology. Mr. Guard wore a lot of hats. And so moving in this direction where we have someone solely focused on instructional technology can see the benefits to our school system and the massive amount of work that our technology team has, has been able to do in just seven months. And so a lot of time and effort has gone into that. And we've been able to transform not only the infrastructure of technology and getting some upgrades and updates that we need. Um, but also the instructional technology right down to.
Right, right.
In the classroom. And so again, I just commend our technology department. I'm thankful for the hard work, the dedication, the organization, the vision that has gone into this. And I appreciate, um, Ms. Bennett taking the time to, to give you guys the updates tonight. I wanted to make sure that you also knew all that had been going on behind the scenes with.
I had no idea.
Lots of work.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. All right, Ms. Purvis, will you make the?
Mr. Chair, I move the Martin County Board of Education into closed session subject to advice from the attorney pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1 and A6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under General Statute 115-C-319 and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee. The board will also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 U.S.C. 1232-G and North Carolina General Statute 115-C-402. The board will also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5.
All right, we have a motion to go into closed session, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Close session granted.
Okay, the microphones are hot. All right, need a motion to approve personnel is presented in closed session?
So moved.
So.
Have a motion and a second to approve personnel is presented in closed session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Thank you. Dr. White, would you like to do the announcements?
All right, thank you so much. We have our March board meeting on Monday, March 4th, and then we'll have our work session on Monday, March 18th.
All righty. Does anybody have anything else that they would like to bring up or anything they'd like to talk about? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Meeting's adjourned.